Be in here in a minute. No. All right. Welcome everyone to December 2nd Bowling Green Town Council meeting. We have a quorum, we have one member that has left us. Deborah Howard is not going to be in attendance tonight. So we are now in session, if we may stand and follow me in the pleasure of allegiance, please. All right, Andrea will be joining us here in a couple of minutes. She's handling some business. Okay. We don't have any delegations, so let's move on to public comments. I open the public comments, anybody that has anything they'd like to address council about, please come forward to the podium, state your name and where you live, please. And keep it to three minutes, please. Go ahead Karen.
Label there. Hi, I'm Karen Tigner and I live outside of Bowling Green. And but I work here in Bowling Green. Ooh, I did worse than you, Arthur. And I'm, I came to speak about the rental rates of the town hall that are going to be increasing. I wish you all would consider not to raise them as much as you are going to be raising them. The building was made for the community to use. We use it for Tinseltown Market and when we do that, we're not able to make anything because vendors are in here and such. So with the increase in costs, that makes it less for us to give as donations because we have expenses and such. We do bring a lot of people to the town on that day and everybody really enjoys it. And it's, it's, you know, everybody else is having open houses that same day. So everybody is benefiting the restaurants and everything. So by increasing the rates, we may not be able to do that. And so I would just like for you to all to reconsider not raising the rates.
All right, thank you. Like I said, we'll vote later to put that out to public hearing for January. And you'll be welcome then to speak again also.
Okay.
So thank you for speaking tonight on that, council taking into invigils.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, here are crickets. All right, I'm going to close public comments. Members' comments, do we have any council members that would like to make a comment? Now's your time.
Yes, I would. And this is not a personal thing. But in the last, I'd say two years or so, I've had a lot of people call me from the town speaking on neputism on our council. I understand from our attorney that in order to change this, it has to go to Richmond, to the legislature. So I would like to recommend that in January meeting, we have it on our agenda to vote on what council desires to do about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean, anybody else? All right, hearing none. We will move on to staff reports. First up, we got Public Works. Anybody have any questions, Josh, you have anything to add?
I don't have anything right now, sorry. I don't have anything right now until obviously later when the engineering report, so.
Okay. Community Economic Development?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for giving me the time tonight. If there are any questions about my report, I'm happy to answer any of them. I did want to bring attention to the expenditures and revenues for Harvest Festival. At the last meeting, Councilwoman Coyle requested a little more of a thorough breakdown, is how I understood it. So I included a treasury, well, the first attachment is similar to what you saw at last month's meeting. I did notice on the treasury report that was printed out that we had not received the committed donation amount of $1,000 from Atlantic Broadband. That was not on our treasury report, so I followed up with Atlantic Broadband and they will be sending that check right away. So that is $1,000 that was unaccounted for in the last report that you received. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you all may have.
So thank you for doing all of that, I appreciate it. So I just want to, the itemization list, is this like a preliminary listing? This isn't a final. And the reason I ask that is because there, in the invoices in the back that Ms. Wright printed off, there's discrepancies between those and the listing. So I'm just trying to get a handle on the differences in amounts. I'm thinking this is a preliminary list and not a final.
So the list that I've done, this one here? So this is, this is accurate. This is accurate, you know, based on all of my records, invoices. This was a working document throughout the planning of the event. The only discrepancy that I could find, and I did point it out, or Judy and I are very aware of it, is the 11,120 in vendor fees. And on the bottom line, on this report, it's $12,697. I have punched the numbers backwards, forwards, different ways, trying to figure that out. Judy and I are aware of it, we have a meeting scheduled for next week to try to find out where, why that is. But I guess the good news is, is that whatever that vendor fee total is, it's not going to be less than 11,120.
Okay, so in the invoices where bills were paid, i.e. republic waste.
Yes.
So they're part of the dumpsters for 2,700.
Yes.
They were paid $960. Who are the other waste people and where's the 11, the difference? It's 27 here, but 960. For radio advertising, there was 1,650, but 1,441 was paid out. Rebecca Sullivan is 250, but she's not even on the list. There's, there's just little things like that.
Yeah.
G and G's paid 13750 for bales of hay, but it says 140, I know it's only $3, but we want to get as close to accounting as possible. So that's why I asked for an accounting.
Okay.
As well as its appropriated money, it wasn't in the budget. So that's why I asked for an Excel audit. Everything finalized, thinking you and Tracy would be like this.
Right, and that's how. No, I completely understand, it's a very valid point and question. In the past, the previous treasurer would go through the treasury report and create her own Excel spreadsheet based on, of expenditures and revenues based on the treasury report. I would then compare that report to my own records so that we would make sure they were accurate. Unfortunately, we don't have that capability anymore for the treasurer to do her own Excel spreadsheet. So what, what I gave to you all is genuinely what we have. What we're able to produce from our, from our business office. In terms of like the, you know, 900 some dollars versus the 2,700, it could be, I don't know the answer to that, I don't know. We can certainly look into it. I am positive though, that the numbers listed on the front page that I have, I have looked at each invoice separately, these numbers should be pretty darn close to accurate. The 140 for hay bales, I don't receive that invoice, Public Works handles that, so I think Sean probably just told me 140 bucks.
That's why I thought this was maybe just an estimate or preliminary and it wasn't finalized because of those, but that's why I appreciate that.
And, you know, the good news is, and I wish I could be accurate to the penny. Like I said, Judy and I do have a meeting next week to kind of go over some stuff and see if we can, you know, get to the bottom of some of the discrepancies with vendor fees. But the good news is, is that the event, the net revenue is increasing every day. We still have a few meals tax still to collect. So the good news is, is that the event costs were covered and the town realized a net revenue that is not going to go down from what you're seeing here.
Okay, yeah, I just, again, Rebecca Sullivan, she's not on your list. And that's a $250 expense, I just want to make sure that.
She is on the list under graphic design.
Oh, that's her?
Yes.
So then again, when, I guess, my mistake, I didn't communicate properly when I asked for the audit. I just thought that we would know that, so. Radio, okay.
The breakdown on my, on my list, Councilwoman Coyle is about as close to accurate as my records indicate, I mean.
Thanks, Joel.
Yes, and again, we'll continue working on it, but there is good news here in that we have covered event costs on the, on the event. Are there any other questions?
I've got one, it's probably more for Tracy. Regarding the back and forth that you just had, you could probably tell me, this will probably be a lot better when that new software comes in, you'll have a lot easier communication to get that.
Yes, and quite honestly, I was not aware of the spreadsheet.
Used to be produced.
Gotcha.
Used to be produced. Do y'all hear me?
When you were touching it, it was like killing the sound for some reason.
Yeah, and hopefully, like, like you said, with the new software, things are going to be a little bit more up to date and not so manual, which we're experiencing so much of in the, in the office and whatever the council wishes as an audit for each event, we're more than glad to, you know, to help. You know, we just need to know what you want, do you want copy of invoices, do you want, how in depth do you want that audit to be?
And the new software should make that easier regardless.
You know, we have a budget, we stick to that budget, if we don't go over that budget, at the end of the day, that's, that's good news.
So maybe you and Jo Elsa could come up with one or two options and then present it back to council and see how they might like to pursue for next year.
Okay.
I've got a comment. I'd just like some clarification in regards to, I guess, how we allocated the funds for this year's Harvest Festival. So I was under the impression that a motion was made to take the funds from the wine festival and move them to the Harvest Festival. And with your heads up item on there, I just want to make sure, was that for the 2021 Wine Festival that didn't take place? We'd move the funds to this year's Harvest Festival? Or is that saying that in 2022, which falls under this fiscal year, those funds are not currently there?
Yeah, yeah, they're not currently there. So what, what I was going to ask after we're done talking about the Harvest Fest part, was if we could put that on the agenda for January to reappropriate those funds? Because now we're free and clear from Harvest Festival, it made money, so there is plenty of money to put back in for the wine festival. But I would also like to, I guess, ask, because I know someone else that'll probably ask for it anyway, if we could get a similar audit of the last wine festival that we did have, I know we didn't have it the year before, but if we could get a little reference material to look at, at the next meeting.
Absolutely, I can do that for you, Councilman.
Awesome.
Question, I had last meeting ask you, Jo Elsa, about how many food vendors you're expected to collect from the food tax, did you have that, how many vendors there were for the food tax?
Yes, there were four vendors that were outstanding, four professional food vendors, and that information's in your packet as well.
Total food vendors, we only had four that were paying food tax?
No ma'am, we had four that were delinquent in pain.
How many total vendors, food vendors did we have?
Off the top of my head, I'm not completely sure, however, I think we had around 13. But some of them are tax exempt, such as the Sparta Ruertens, the Cornerstone Community Church, nonprofits that sell food at the event. But I think total, we had about 13.
And how many are outstanding?
Three, at this point.
Three? These four that are, let's see, how many have listed, five that you have listed? Is that their total, or any of, do they have any of those monies? Do they have any more money that's due on those? Or are the four that are outstanding is all new vendors?
I'm not sure that I understand your question.
The five that are listed, are they all paid in full?
The folks that have paid, have paid their taxes in full, yes.
So the four that have not paid, have not paid anything?
Correct.
Well, I'm just confused because looking at the amount of taxes that you collect and the amount of money that they turned in, just take for example, the first one, the Sarah Festivals. They do the gyros and the steak and cheese, correct?
Yes.
Their sandwiches are $9 apiece. If you had people just go up and just buy a sandwich, they're telling, you're telling me there's only 530 people that bought food that day from them? And how many people would you say we had at the festival, just a rough estimate?
We don't know, I answered that at the last meeting, we don't know. We estimate, we estimate 10,000.
You did, right. We need to settle down the tentor voice, please.
Well, out of the 10,000, with just these five best, five food people here, if you calculate by the percentage of tax, 6%, that's only 875 people that ate just a sandwich.
Okay.
I think that the taxes is being very underlooked. I think there's a lot more due. There should be probably quadruple that amount. I think that the town needs to get a hold of that somehow. To hear that the festival, if you take Sarah Festival, she's saying she only turned in $4,775 because she only paid tax of 286. She probably did $4,075 in two hours.
I have no idea.
Well, I'm telling you, when we were in the line, there was at least 10 people in front of us and every person was buying at least for two people.
So, so let me, let me interrupt just for a second. In other words, you're saying that the town needs, or council needs to do something to get the town to collect more taxes? Because you are right, we're losing tax dollars.
Well, the cattle guy, the cattle guy, he turns in $110 in taxes. That means he only did $1,800. $1,800.
So the treasurer can request documentation to support the numbers? Would they should have, they should have numbers to support how many people they fed?
I understand that, but how do you do that with cash? Everybody pays cash on these things.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, is that through the treasurer, we can require them to produce receipts, other documentation related to that day, and we can ask them to prove that they only sold, you know, X number of.
Right.
Whatever.
Well, I've never seen them give out receipts, they don't do cash registers, they have a box they could pull the money out of and stuff. So it's, it's, it's hard to track.
I used my card today. A lot of them were taken card, I used mine like four times.
Well, those are, those are trackable.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I know, you know, we've been through this before and I bought it up four years ago, that we need to get a handle on the taxes that we're not getting from the food vendors. It's a lot of money that we could make on these events. So even if we have to have the treasurer out there at these events collecting it before they even pack up and move out. Because it's revenue to the town, you know, we put the tax on it for a reason. So we need to come up with some way to better gain control of it. And we need to come up with it by next year. And we need to get it implemented.
Another one, the Bright Eyes concession, they also sell the steak and cheese and stuff. By the amount of money that she turned in, $65, that means she only did $1,100 that day? That's hard to believe.
Yes, it seems low. We can definitely try to come up with a better plan for next time and do a little more legwork.
Yeah. I really think that we ought to consider using the power of the treasurer to request documentation. Because perhaps if there's some follow-up this year, that will also strengthen any plan that's implemented next year.
As long as we do some type of follow-up, I mean, but just to accept these numbers, they're not right. I went over them too. That's why I questioned it last meeting about, about the small amount she had. You know, we're not doing anything to even try to figure out, what can we do to gain the money?
How do we get it if they don't pay? How do you get the money if they don't pay?
You'll notice in my packet, there's a letter that went out on the 24th of November asking with, asking for, explaining that they're passed due on their meals tax. If we don't get them, if we don't get the tax, they're not invited back to Bowling Green events, that's always been the policy.
We're just out of the money. We're just out of the money.
Well, town council is more than welcome, the power rests with your body and you can make any policy you'd like. And I'll gladly follow direction, but the buck stops with the board.
Counsel, I do.
Well, it stops, it stops with the board, but it also starts with employees wanting to try to implement things and coming aboard to council and say, hey, we're having a problem here gaining these taxes. These numbers aren't right, I know they're not. So what can we do to better that? So it starts out there too, I'm sorry, don't throw it on board.
I mostly agree with that, but I don't think that we would do that after the fact on our staff.
I did speak with Mark Bassoon.
At times, I think in this one, we didn't, we didn't have a plan beforehand though.
I asked beforehand.
If they are running an event and they have problems, yes, they should come to us or come to town manager and say, we have a problem that we need to figure out how we're going to solve it. I know there's more out there. Where's it at, what can we do to gain it? Because they are cheating us. And there's more ways, I mean, you can get them more for the food spots that, you know, that we charge them for. Five, 10,000 people coming through here, let me tell you what, they're making it kill it.
Oh yeah, no, I.
Making it kill it.
I agree with you, not that, you know, my opinion is necessarily, I'm not the professional in the field, but yeah, those numbers look low to me. I think the problem that we have for this year, I'm not saying going forward, I'm saying going forward, we can definitely come up with something. But for this year, we tabled the thing too many times and then at the end, we funded it kind of last minute. We could have taken a bit more time to come up with a more plan to empower the staff to do some more stuff. I agree that I questioned those numbers. Like Andrea said, we can, we can send the treasurer out there to do some stuff and maybe see if we can recoup a little bit more. But I think that just all the more should instill in us the need to come up with a better plan for next time and get it done.
Well, that's, that's what this is all about.
At our last meeting, Ms. Fincham mentioned she already discussed this with Mike Bassoon.
I did, I did speak with Mark Bassoon and he said capturing those taxes prior to them leaving for the day is very beneficial. So we will implement that for the next Harvest Festival.
I also, I thought it was stated at the last meeting that it was on an honor system on behalf, on behalf of that vendor to produce their taxes for what they, I guess, brought in on revenue that day, is that correct?
It's not really an honor system. They are collecting a tax that belongs to the town. And so if someone doesn't pay meals tax, it is considered embezzlement because it never actually belongs to the vendor. And they are required to do it in accordance with their records. So it's not really an honor system and it's a felony if you fail to pay your meals taxes.
So should we draft up some type of documentation for next year stating the consequences of that for the meals tax? I mean, I, to me, that would make sense to alleviate this, you know, problem.
I just, I want you to understand, you know, they are not in the position of power. They are only collecting that in trust for the town and the town does have mechanisms. And I agree, we need to come up with a comprehensive plan for next year, but we could, you know, provide them with something, making them aware of that. Yeah, okay.
Just going to say, you know, could we get Andrea to, Jo Elsa, do a letter to those four people that haven't turned in anything? Would you be on board with that, so we could collect those?
Sure.
Instead of just saying, well, don't come next year?
Sure.
Because after this letter goes out, then what? If you don't hear from them? Thank you. I mean.
If they apply for any event in the future to be a food vendor, they're declined.
Consider whether to refer it to the Commonwealth's Attorney for prosecution.
And I guess for my clarification, a nonprofit food vendor that day is exempt, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, understood. So I guess in the future, we need to have the food vendor specify if they're for-profit or nonprofit.
She does.
Okay, understood.
I requested that information from staff, they did provide it to me and 100% of the vendors did pay their taxes. I'm not saying it was the correct amount, I'm saying that they did pay taxes. But thank you for your feedback and we'll make sure that staff implements that at the next Harvest Festival and the next events that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, move on to the Police Department Monthly Report?
I'm sorry, if I may, really quickly. I'd like to thank Councilman Covington for being willing to, as one of our newer council members, for being willing to be a judge at this year's Christmas parade, which is next Saturday. Thank you so much for your willingness to help us out. Councilman, we are excited to have you there and honored that you'll be a judge.
All right, Chief? You got anything, anybody got anything for Chief? Hearing none, move on to the Town Clerk Treasurer Report. Anything for the Town Treasurer? Hearing none, move on to the Town Manager's Monthly Report, I know she might have something exciting, who knows?
Just a couple of things. The, there is a town council approved participating. in a regional water supply, uh, withdrawal permit from the Rappahannock River. Uh, I just wanted to update council in that, uh, the County of Caroline is providing, um, assurance to the town that, uh, we will not be obligated for any, um, we, we, we won't be financially obligated, um, until the time that they start, uh, actually implementing that project. And if the town wants to, uh, to not be involved in the project, we can opt out of that project at that time. Um, so that's one update that I've been working with the county on, on that. Uh, and the, at the last town council meeting, um, there was, uh, the Director of Community and Economic Development stated on record that, um, there was, um, a, a missed deadline for our ARPA COVID funds and-
Yeah, that was two, two meetings ago.
There, there might be a, um, there was a concern possibly over, um, losing the remainder of the, the remainder of six hundred and nine thousand dollars. I want to assure council, um, and the citizens that we have not missed a deadline, that the deadline was extended until April thirtieth for, uh, the first report due to the federal government. And, uh, we are not in jeopardy of losing any funds. If there's anything on the report that I can, uh, explain to you, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Was that last month? I thought it was a month before. Was it? I'm sorry.
It doesn't matter.
No, it don't. Yeah, you might be. Any questions for, for Andrea? I mean, uh, be quiet, Andrea. Allison.
Can you, um, are you, are you gonna, in our January meeting or so, are you gonna bring back a, uh, a refined letter of support for the county regarding your discussions with them regarding the water?
Yes, sir. I am going to do that as soon as I, I'm waiting on a response from the county
Of course.
Um, to provide from their attorneys that information.
Sounds good.
We had, if you remember as council, we already agreed to sponsor, to, uh, sponsor the, uh, in the water project. Uh, the way it got written was not accepted by DEQ.
Yeah.
Uh, not that we didn't have our support for it. So the deadline is nearing on this to get done. I know Port Royal just did theirs. Uh, and we're gonna do ours. And once we get it, to get the information from the counties on the moratorium value, the mo, the money value, Allison's gonna go ahead and, uh, write it up and I'll sign it and I'll send it in and everybody will get a copy of it at the next meeting if we have to do it that early. So, you know, we're caught, the county is saying it's gotta be done quick because that time is getting close. So we'll see. All right. Anybody else before we move on to consent agendas? All right, moving on to, uh, consent agendas. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agendas as they are?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove number seven due to a question for that one.
All right.
I could, do I need to make a motion on behalf of that?
Well, we can, 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 can we just make a motion and he, and he discuss number seven?
He did it correctly.
He did it, okay, just wanna make sure. All right, uh, Councilman, uh, Hooly would like to pull out number seven. So do I have a, uh, motion to accept consent agenda number six? Got a motion by Ms. Gaines. Second by Jeff. All, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right, number seven. Uh, do I have a motion to accept consent agenda number seven?
So moved.
So moved by Jeff, second. Second by Ms. Gaines. All right, Arthur, what do you got for discussion on number seven?
It's on, um, I've got a couple of questions. So in regards to page fifty-two, we, um, let's see here, that one was for Caroline County was, do we have clarification on what that actually was? It was forty-nine, twenty-two? Um, that's gonna be fifty-two. I think it's the last one right before, um, that I've-
I believe you're referring to section to the six, the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. You are correct. I'm, I'm off there on a page. I'm sorry about that. There's, uh, already approved.
Yep.
Understood.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to adopt number seven. Do I, uh, all in favor, raise your right hand? Arthur? All right, all in favor? Okay.
Mr. Hooly, you could still ask, um, the staff after the meeting.
Understood. Sorry about that.
Yeah, you can, yeah. All right. And hope, yeah, hopefully, uh, hopefully when we get the, uh, we get the new system in place and everything, we can maybe try to get these out a day or two earlier. So it gives everybody time to go through them and any question can call into Town Hall for the ladies here and try to answer them. Uh, but I appreciate that.
What's that, answer my questions? Oh, you gave me a lot of guidance. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very good, sir. Ma'am, very good. All right, unfinished business. We need to establish a public hearing on the Town Hall rates. So. What we wanna do is see, we have a Town Hall, Town Hall rental rates.
Mr. Mayor and Council, may I add that, uh, it, as well as this page on rental rates, um, there will be an additional forty-nine dollar charge for police services.
Forty-seven, forty-nine?
I'm sorry.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven dollar charge for police protection per hour to be advertised.
All right, uh, do I hear a motion that we, um, put this forward to public hearing, allowing Allison permission to, uh, advertise this for public hearing?
That's how move.
For January, for the, uh, Town Hall rental rates and the rate for the, uh, police of forty-seven dollars per hour. Jean first? Oh, second, okay. So I got a first by, uh, Jean was first and I got a second by Valerie. Y'all confusing me here now.
Who's on third?
I know. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, nay? Motion carries. All in favor. Y'all confusing me up here. And, and we're on tape too, y'all know that, right? All right, new business. We have a speaker here today uh, for preliminary engineering report. This is for discussion only and this is, uh, Josh Ibrery? Is that, is that correct?
Uh, I'm sorry, yeah, I just put my last name.
With, with, with Drew Berry. Excuse me, I thought it said he was with Drew Berry. All right, well, the floor is y'all's.
All right, so just, um, quick background, um, again, so last month, um, I let everyone know that, um, the engineers will be here to speak on it. Um, again, a little bit of background, the town was awarded a search grant for the engineering report for, um, the sewer portion of the utilities. Uh, and then, so Dewberry Engineering, uh, is the engineering firm that conducted the engineering report. And I have with me, uh, professional engineer, uh, Dan, who is with Dewberry Engineering to, um, walk y'all through the report, um, and get, you know, step by step on, starting with, you know, sewer mains and then the wastewater plant as well. And then answer any questions, um, that you may have and I'm available to answer as well, so.
Yeah, good, good evening. Thanks for, uh, having me here, uh, tonight. So, uh, my name is Dan Vilhauer. I'm with Dewberry Engineers, um, the, uh, uh, project manager for this, uh, project. So again, as Josh mentioned, so the main purpose of this was to evaluate, um, improvements to the existing wastewater collection system in wastewater treatment plant, uh, within the town. Um, as, uh, in a copy of the, of the preliminary engineering report is, is in your, uh, meeting agenda, I believe. Um, so starting with the wastewater collection system, so, uh, working with, uh, town staff, we identified about two miles of eight-inch and ten-inch, uh, gravity sewer mains that were constructed of, uh, concrete pipe that were in poor conditions that needed to be replaced. So there were several collapses. Um, and just to give you a little bit of information on, um, concrete pipe, it's not very commonly used anymore. So typically modern materials include PVC or ductile iron. Uh, they stand up to the hydrogen sulfide gases that are common in sewer a lot better. Um, and, uh, so what, what we're proposing to do is to replace, um, these, uh, segments with essentially modern pipe materials. There's also, I believe, about forty, uh, sewer manholes that were identified. There were brick manholes. Again, that's a, uh, old outdated technology that was done, um, you know, decades ago. And, uh, both of these, uh, issues, so they're gonna be replaced, or sorry, those are gonna be, uh, re-lined, uh, with some tenuous material to essentially stop the inflow from it. And these improvements really, uh, you know, two things, provide additional reliability to your wastewater collection system, but also to, uh, reduce the amount of inflow and infiltration you're getting during rain events, which is obviously, you know, going through the wastewater treatment plant and causing, uh, treatment issues and really just taking up capacity. Um, so that, so that was the wastewater, uh, pipes. And then also within the wastewater collection system, uh, we also identified five, uh, wastewater, uh, lift stations or pump stations, uh, that needed some improvements. Um, all five of them, um, either, they either didn't have emergency generators or generators had to be replaced. And again, emergency generator is in place for power failures to make sure that, um, you continue to have reliable, uh, sewer service and, uh, prevent overflows. And then there's also a few additional items such as, um, and one station had, uh, pumps being replaced. And then a lot of the stations, we, uh, were adding, uh, security fencing, uh, just, you know, see for security, safety purposes, but also to minimize the chance of vandalism. So that, that's on the wastewater collection, uh, side. Um, and then moving on to the, uh, wastewater, uh, treatment facility. Uh, so, uh, with that, um, I'm gonna go through a summary of the, uh, different facilities and, uh, within the wastewater treatment plant. And, uh, so really what we did first is, uh, and, and this is required by USDA Rural Development, um, as part of their search grant, uh, P E R, uh, to obtain funding is what you do is you look at a population, uh, projection analysis uh, using, uh, historical data as well as information from Walden Cooper Center from, uh, University of Virginia, um, and any other data provided based on project development, uh, zoning, things like that. So based on our, uh, demand projections, uh, and, and evaluation of existing, uh, flows, uh, over the next twenty-year period, uh, you're not gonna exceed the capacity of the existing wastewater treatment plant. But there were a number of improvements needed due to the age and condition of the existing facility to continue to provide reliable treatment. Uh, so based on that, uh, we recommended that you stick with the existing, uh, plant capacity of two hundred and thirty thousand gallons per day. So currently you're flowing about, uh, I believe, a hundred and thirty thousand gallons per day, so about fifty percent of the capacity. Um, and, um, you know, a, a few reasons. So number one, you know, USDA Rural Development, unless you can justify the need for increased capacity, they're not gonna fund it, which obviously is a, is an important thing. The other thing is, uh, to expand the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant. Because you are in the Chesapeake Bay watershed, you have to, you have a certain, uh, nutrient load allocation for nitrogen phosphorus. So right now, you, as your grandfather then, you haven't expanded your plant. Um, you don't have to meet, uh, total nitrogen, total phosphorus limits. But if you expand the plant, then you have to, uh, implement nutrient removal technology, which makes the plant a lot more expensive, only, not only to construct, but also to operate. And you have more stringent limits. Uh, so for all those reasons, we recommend that sticking with the existing capacity. The other reason too is if you put in facilities that have more capacity, you're not gonna use them for over twenty years. A lot of these, what, what, what we're calling short-lived assets are just gonna sit there and then you're gonna have to replace them in twenty years and really just wasted assets. So anyway, so, so for all those reasons, we recommended that you stick with your current capacity. Um, so based on that, but there were a lot of, um, improvements be, uh, within the wastewater treatment plant, really mainly due to the fact, because the, the last, uh, treatment plant project you really had, the main one was about thirty years ago. And within that period, um, your short-lived assets, your, um, treatment equipment, your pumps, your blowers, your generators, electrical gear, they usually have a design life of twenty to thirty years. So really you're nearing the end of, um, the useful life of a lot of these, uh, facilities. Uh, a, and in addition, a lot of these facilities, because they were installed thirty years ago, just aren't up to modern standards. Um, and so, um, so we went through each unit process throughout the wastewater treatment plant and looked at, um, what we would recommend to, to, as improvements. So starting, uh, with the headworks, which essentially is where you remove the large debris, uh, you know, screening facility in there. So for that facility, we recommended, um, you know, the concrete was in good condition. So we recommended just replacing the mechanical equipment, so the screen, uh, screening facility. Because you are having, um, a significant amount of inflow, uh, during wet weather events, uh, we also included a new equalization basin. Uh, so that does a few things for the staff. It helps them, uh, deal with those high, high flow vents during, uh, wet weather vents, but also gives them some flexibility if, if they have to take a, a unit offline for a short amount of time. Gives them flexibility to be able to hold, store flow there, um, and, you know, increases reliability. Um, so that was the next, uh, unit process. That was a new one that we recommended to be added. Um, the, the heart of the treatment process, uh, is called your oxidation ditch or your biological reactor. So for that process, we evaluated, uh, a few different options for making improvements there and ultimately recommended, um, a modern, uh, diffused duration and, and blower system and split it into two trains to provide additional reliability. Uh, working with, um, the town staff, uh, we, we thought that would be the best, uh, your best bang for your buck and provide you with the most efficient treatment. Um, and then moving on to the, uh, clarification system, so that's where you start separating the solids from liquids. Um, we, uh, with, with that facility, uh, we're reusing the existing concrete structures, but gutting and replacing the mechanical equipment and then also making improvements to, uh, to the, um, uh, the pumping, the return activated pumping facility to improve operational, um, flexibility, uh, for the staff. Uh, and then moving on to, to the tertiary, um, treatment, uh, that's where you have your filtration. Again, the filters are thirty years old. They're gonna be replaced. The UV disinfection system, uh, which provides for disinfection before it, uh, goes up, uh, down to the stream and to the river. Uh, that, uh, that system, we're gonna reuse the existing concrete structure, but, um, replace the UV bulbs, the control system. Um, and then we're gonna reuse the existing outfall because again, you know, it's in good condition. It's PVC pipe, uh, pipelines of that nature, um, you know, should last, you know, fifty-plus years. And then the last part of it, um, for the process is the solids handling part. So that's where you take the sludge that's wasted from the plant and you have to, um, de-water it and then haul it off site. So currently you, um, you have outdated technologies, so sludge drying beds that again, were installed thirty-plus years ago. It's, uh, not very effective at drying out solids. So you're paying more costs for, for hauling, um, the landfill, uh, more solids to haul off and it's just very labor intensive. Um, so what we included was a new, uh, de-watering facility with a mechanical de-watering device, a centrifuge. And that gets your, um, your solids content, uh, probably doubled to what you can do now. And that essentially reduces your hauling, you know, hauling tonnage by half. Um, and again, provides you with, with modern technology that is more operator-friendly, reduces the, you know, staff, uh, in, intensity of, of having to deal with it. Uh, and then also the electrical and the control system, again, thirty years old, outdated. Uh, we were recommending, uh, that you replace that, the generator with a new, uh, plant-wide generator that can, uh, power the entire plant. Um, and then, uh, new electrical room with a lot of new, uh, electrical switch, switch gear, um, and distribution as well. Uh, and then a, um, a plant-wide, uh, we call a SCADA system, which is a supervisory controlled data acquisition system. Essentially, it's, it's the brains of the facility. Uh, it's modern of the day. Essentially, it's, it's the brains of the facility. It's modern up to date. It allows the plant staff to keep track of all plant processes, how they're operating on a real-time basis, and just helps to, you know, fine-tune how, how well they can operate the facility. So that's, that's generally the improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. So again, I think, you know, all these improvements will increase the reliability of both the wastewater collection system and the wastewater treatment plant. And then it will also extend the life of these facilities for, for decades to come, providing you with reliable wastewater treatment and wastewater collection. And there, there's also a schedule, implementation schedule. So these projects, as you probably know, they take a decent amount of time to implement. So right now, we're in the process of having USDA Rural Development review our report. So once they do that, that's where, you know, we go through the funding application process to try to get funds. And so that process, the design, the permitting process, approval from DEQ, that usually takes a year to a year and a half. And then construction, especially with the volatility of, you know, supply chain stuff and market, we're thinking probably a minimum of 24 months. So again, this project, you're talking about a three to four, three to four-year time, timeframe realistically before you, you know, get these facilities improvements up and running. And so the, the last part of it, so we put together an estimated construction, or essentially total project cost, which is on tape, page 47 of the PER, page 118 of your, of your agenda. So we estimate the cost to be just under $16 million for this project, so not insignificant sum. But, you know, we're hoping that, you know, USDA Rural Development would have a significant amount of grant funding available. So hopefully, the, you know, the infrastructure funding will also help. So, so obviously, that, that would have to be sorted out down the line. And again, I will note that this is a cost estimate at this time. And as you know, the volatility of pricing is all been placed now. So, you know, in a year, year and a half, when the project is actually designed, ready to go out to bid for construction, that could very well change. And hopefully, our supply chain and inflation issues will get under control by then. But obviously, I can't guarantee that. So. So, yeah. So with that, that's, you know, generally the summary of the report. So certainly happy to answer any questions you all may have.
I've got like a two-part, like personnel question, just, just because I'm curious. Is it, well, first, is that going to change any requirements as far as certifications? Or what kind of educational differences are going to have to be made up with modern technology? I'm sure y'all want it, but is there going to be a learning curve?
So as far as staff, like, so as far as a permit is concerned, it would still be a class-two facility. That wouldn't, that wouldn't change. So as part of the permit, like, the license requirement wouldn't change. It would still be currently.
No, I mean, the, the staffing certifications, like, would they need to go out and learn how to operate new machinery or anything?
So like, for instance, the centrifuge, they would need to learn how to operate that. And, you know, as far as like the diffusers, you know, things like that, it would be new technology that they would be learning, kind of what they're learning now as far as here's how you run this process. So it would be the same. It would be hands-on training. And I mean, we would have, you know, as things are installed, contractors would have, you know, hands-on training with, with staff to show them how to, you know, run everything.
All right. Is that going to change, like, your staffing hours any? Is it going to be like that much better or be about the same?
So for staffing, depending on what technology is, you know, ultimately put in place, you know, as Dan mentioned, the SCADA system. If it's, if staff is able to monitor that remotely, so as far as a laptop, that could, you know, potentially reduce, you know, staffing hours. As far as labor hours, you know, as Dan mentioned, with the, with the centrifuge and things like that, that will require less hours for them to, you know, dedicate to that part of the process to do other things around the plant. You know, housekeeping, maintenance one.
Oh, that's good. That's, that's more what I'm looking at than cutting anything, of course, but.
Yeah. So staffing currently is, you know, seven days a week, seven to five. So it's 10 hours a day. That includes holidays, weekends, snow days, like, they have to be here. And that's part of the permit that you, you have those staffing hours. So you would have to work with DEQ to get that approval of how many hours they would require a staff, you know, operator to be at the plant as well. But as far as like, you know, doing, like, taking the time to do one process, they would spend less hours doing that. But then other hours, you know, maintaining, like preventative maintenance, routine maintenance. And so those things that they, you know, currently may not get to because of those other things that they can now.
There's always something else to do.
Yes.
Especially for you all.
I have one. And the, the process of adding this new equipment in, is there any certain time that the plant would have to shut down to implement, or can everything be diverted around?
Yeah. So with these kind of proj, you guys still hearing? Yeah, with these kind of projects, I mean, the, the base assumption is the plant is going to have to still operate and meet permit. So the construction will be sequenced in such a way that there would be certain processes that would either, you know, be bypassed or one train completed at different, you know, different times. But we would ensure that the plant would still remain in operation throughout the duration of construction and meet permit. And that's, I don't, there, there's no, there's no way around that. So, yeah. So that, that's part of the, the.
So in other words, you're saying you would have to re-permit it while certain things were going on to allow certain levels to leave? I mean, is that what you're talking about?
No, sir. No, no re-permitting. What I'm saying is the plant will remain in operation during the entire construction process and meet the permitted limits.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Figured it would be. Thank you. Well, I'm sure we're going to read this report over very good. That's one, I'm very interested in the, in the sewer plant and how it does. And updating it, let's say, 20 years down the road, what would be our process then? Does this have anything in here talking about updating future or not?
A lot of money.
Oh, yeah, I know. But I'm just saying.
As far as expanding the capacity or?
Yeah, yeah. No, just the capacity, not the plant.
Expanding the capacity down the road, yeah.
Right. 20 years, you said, or something?
Yeah. So within, well, within the 20-year projection that we had, based on the data.
Right.
You are not even at capacity.
Okay.
So that, yeah, based on, again, based on circle trends, data provided as far as potential, you know, developments, and then the Walden Cooper data for EVA.
So, so, so we're good there, and we're not looking for increase in our capacity until way further down the road, then?
Correct. And, and again, I would not recommend considering that right now because you're going to be spending a lot more money on that.
Well, you're right, because of the nitrates. And, you know, hopefully, when they do the upgrade, the upgrade will handle the nitrates. So, but, but, but you're right. You are right. I just wanted to know, you know, about how far we were looking and that our capacity is good for 20 years. Okay. All right. Thank you very much for coming. Anybody else got anything before we move on? I got one other.
I think, Mr. Mayor, they stated 130,000 gallons.
Per day, yes. And we're at 250.
250.
Is that right?
The 130 is adding in what the county currently has with us through a contract.
That's what we're doing right now. Right? How is that added in, Josh, what we're doing right now?
So what we're doing right now, don't believe it was, so the high end was 130. Yeah, it was a little bit less. And so currently, I already got with Tracy the other week on this because I was interested too, is how much the county was already using. And they were actually using a lot more than what I thought they were using. So their capacity included in this, because I actually did the numbers too, when the developments were, you know, going, you know, talking about. And so with their capacity, with even the two developments that had been talked about, would still put you under that limit by, I think, I think I calculated at least 40,000 gallons. So you would still have 45, you know, 40,000 gallons to, you know, for other developments. But the other thing too, like Dan mentioned, when we looked at this, it had been brought up to, you know, me a couple of times that the county was going to build a lift station for that section that we were providing sewer for. So we were trying to work with the county as well to get that in writing, whether they would need future capacity or need that capacity. Because that's one of the things we, we need to know. Because if they no longer need that capacity, then it becomes the, the town's capacity. But to answer your question, I, I did calculate that in. And those other developments that were in place, and we were still, you know, significantly under to allow for, you know, another development as well. So.
Okay.
I guess my understanding is that it's roughly 40,000 to 50,000 gallons that the county has contracted through the town. So we, if they did put in a lift station, that would alleviate that and return us down. So it would be correct to say we're somewhere in between 70,000 and 80,000 gallons on a daily basis?
So on a daily basis, it's around 100 to 110. And that, so the county is currently using, I had calculated, it was like 12,500. The, the agreement is for 45,000 per day, which left, you know, 33. So that put it, I just went from 110, you know, and that put it to 140. And then with the 100, it was 88 and I think 102. So it was 190 homes, I think, put us at like 195-ish, maybe a little under. So it still left a, you know, that last capacity. And then, as you said, if they, if they no longer need that, then that, that frees it up. So that's why we did not go with increasing the capacity at this time, you know, just because of those things. So if, if the county needs that capacity, and it's going to continue to need that capacity, where it's like, if they're not going to build that lift station, then that's one of the things we would, we would need to know from them to, you know, moving forward. So.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Well, thank you, sir. I really appreciate you coming and, you know, explaining this to us. I know before I was looking forward to be more for an expansion, but what you were saying sounds, you know, I'm satisfied with it. I think it sounded okay.
Yep. Thank you all. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. All right. One issue that was left off the agenda that I'm going to need to add on here at the end. The hiring of the part-time police, it was inadvertently left off. And Chief walked out with a radio call. But I guess we don't need him. Do, uh?
Yeah, just, just lay out what the motion should be.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do. Do I hear a motion to hire a part-time police officer onto the police staff for the town? Is that right?
Give the chief the authorization to?
That's, that's fine. So I do hear a motion. I got a first by Arthur.
Hire a part-time police officer.
Okay. I got a second by?
Second.
Second by Jeff.
May I get clarification? That's not to exceed the amount that's on the current budget, the current but budgeted amount for this year?
Right. You want to?
To not ex, I'll start that over. I'll make a motion to hire a part-time police officer to not exceed the current allotted budget amount for the police department.
Yeah, for this year.
For this year.
For this fiscal year, right? Okay. All right. And still second by Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. We'll do a roll call on this one. Mr. Hulley? Jeff? Jerry? Jerry? Valerie? I'm going to get him straight one day. Was that a I or was that eh eh eh? You turn your nameplate around, I can see it. Okay. Ms. Gaines? Jeff?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, do I have any committee information?
Utility sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera, did not meet this month. And I'll go ahead and state, we're going to go ahead and cancel the, the December one as, as well. And then we'll have the new format of meetings as of the new year.
Nothing? Valerie, anything? Jerry? Arthur?
Personnel Committee and ordinance did not meet.
All right. Chief, you got your part-time deputy. Okay. You had to step out of the room, so.
Thank you all very much.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Got a first by Jeff, and I got a second by Ms. Gaines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Question is closed, Joe.
Merry Christmas, everybody.